Board of Commissioners Public Meeting, Tuesday, February 27, 2017. The time is 8:44. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, notice that this meeting was published in December 1st, 2016, issues of the Nutley Sun and the Herald News, and the December 2nd, 2016, issues of the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Petracco?
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Here.
All present, Mayor. We have regular Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for December 20th, 2016, December 29th, 2016, January 3rd of 2017, and January 17th of 2017. I need a motion, please.
I'll move him.
I need a... Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
With the exception of December 20th, aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Uh, yes, except for January 3rd.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
We also have executive session minutes for November 1st, 2016, November 21st of 2016, December 6th of 2016, Sessions 1 and 2, December 29th of 2016, January 3rd of 2017, and January 17th of 2017.
Move it.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye, except for December 6th and January 3rd.
Commissioner Petracco? Except for November 1st, right Commissioner?
Exactly.
Thank you. Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for minutes. Communications. Commissioner Mauro G. Tucci has submitted an events application for a street concert on Franklin Avenue between Reelin Avenue and High Street for Thursday, January 15, 2017, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM, with a rain date of June 16, 2017. Need a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
The Nutley Chamber of Commerce has submitted an event application for their annual 5K run to be held on Sunday, May 7th, 2017, from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
The Nutley Irish American Association has submitted an event application for their annual St. Patrick's Day Parade for Saturday, March 4th, 2017, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
The Friends of Phoenix Center Foundation Inc. has submitted an application for a social fair permit for their casino night fundraiser for Friday, April 28, 2017, from 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers? Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Rotary Club has submitted an application for a social fair permit for their beefsteak tricky tray event, which will be held Saturday, April 1st, 2017, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli. And the Knights of Columbus Holy Family Council has requested permission to hold a Sunday raffle on May 28, 2017, at 1:05 PM at Holy Family Church.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for communications, Mayor.
Sports Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, I have a shade report for January of 17.
Bills, Madam Clerk?
Yes, bills for Tuesday, February 7, 2017. Public Affairs, $1,6,966.02. Revenue and Finance, $7,481,388.67. Public Safety, $59,443.37. Public Works, $185,041.20. Parks and Public Property, $855,013.30. For total payroll, $799,688.11, for a grand total of $9,487,540.67.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
Public comment on agenda items only. Madam Clerk, will you read the notice?
All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone, provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks of the Board and its individual members may be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate members of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody like to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only?
Penny Landry, 135 Lakeside Drive. I have a question concerning Resolution Number 32-7 and Resolution Number 33-17. Veridian Environmental Consultants, which in the pre-meeting it was said that this was for removal of tanks. Could you please provide the location of the tanks for the change order for $1,296, and also the tanks or the properties that fall under the contract for $15,000?
I can answer that. There are several. This is cleaning up the paperwork, and this is for the tank that was located here, all right, in this building. It was off on the side in the driveway. So that's what the first ordinance is for, and the change order for $1,296.25.
And is that additional to the original contract?
Yes, it is.
And what was the original contract?
It was $44,935.
So it's now $45,000 to remove one tank from the side driveway?
It was one tank. It was the excavation. It was getting rid of the soil, the contaminated soil, and it was all the reporting and all the cleanup that's associated with that as far as the paperwork is concerned.
Okay, thank you. And then the...
The second one is to continue the work, primarily now. We've achieved success in just about all of the buildings with the exception of the Public Works Department, the garage. So we are concentrating on that now to get rid of the tanks that are there. I believe we still have an oil-water separator that's in the ground, and we are beginning that process so we can be free and clear of this finally.
Okay, so these are additional contracts to the environmental contracts that we have entered into for the Davis property and the Chickolini property?
These have nothing to do with those properties at this point in time.
We have additional environmental contracts for those two properties then?
I know of no environmental contracts for those properties.
You don't know of any?
Nothing, no, nothing that I'm dealing with right now on either the Davis property or the Chickolini property.
Does anyone here know because we did pass...
Well, I would be the one that would ask that too, because I'm the Parks and Public Property guy, so that comes under the purview of public property. So I'm telling you unequivocally, right now there are no contracts for either the Chickolini property or the Davis property.
But there were last year. We did pass resolutions for environmental contracts for the Davis and the Chickolini property.
No. No, correct. Go ahead, Counselor.
We obtained one company to do review relative to diligence on the Davis property. Chickolini property, they removed the tank at their own expense prior to closing, so we didn't...
Okay, so the owners of Chickolini removed their tank prior to closing on the property?
Correct.
Thank you.
Want else want to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only? Can I have a motion to close the public comment?
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci? Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Board of Commissioner announcements. We had a visitor today in Nutley, and I'll let Commissioner Petracco update us on that. It was very, very well received, and thank you for arranging it.
Thanks, Mayor. We did. We had Mayor... I'm sorry. We had Governor Christie come to Nutley to Washington School this morning. I want to thank our Mayor for attending. It was for our lead program, which is to educate our children not to try drugs, to stay off drugs. And I have to say, our police department has done an unbelievable job. Mike Beddella asked me not to mention his name, or Steve Rogers' son, Steve Junior, but I just feel it in my heart that I have to mention their names because they have taken the lead on this. It is really second to none what the Nutley police officers have done to engage with the students and our children around this community to extend a hand of friendship to these kids. This way, they know who their police officers are, and instead of running away from them, they will be running to them. And just to make a really sound comment of what I learned today from the Governor and from the lead program, and maybe the Mayor will remember this, is when Governor Christie said to the sixth grade class at Washington School, "You are the most important people in the room, not the reporters, not the elected officials, but the children of the class from all the sixth graders. And how do we beat these opiates and drug abuse and heroin in this town and every town across the state and in America? By our children. And if we could convince our children not to try drugs and not to do them, that's how this epidemic will stop." So there's a way that we could educate our children, and it starts at home, of course, of not to ever try drugs, recreational or for any other use, but to stay off them. Just think 20 years from now what this state will look like. So again, Mayor, thank you. Commissioner Tucci, thanks for your support. Obviously, I know Commissioner Evans couldn't make it, and Steve, thanks for always being there for us in town.
I'd like to say that the lead program under Commissioner Petracco, which probably didn't want to say, but I'll say it, you've become a model for the rest of the state. And I understand it's headed in that direction. And I'll tell you what, Commissioner Petracco, I sit here, and I remember when you took office, you really dug your feet in with regard to drug abuse. You really did, and you've been very consistent for the many years that you've sat here. And you didn't let up. You did not let up. And you started with the Hope Program and all types of other programs. So I'll tell you what, it's just proud to be here, sitting here with you and knowing what you've done to help the young children of the community after all these years. So God bless you for that. Thank you.
Commissioner?
Yes, I'd also like to start off by commending Commissioner Petracco. You've done an excellent job. The leadership that you've shown in the Public Safety Department is unparalleled, and I think you have an excellent department. I think your people are working at a level that many communities can't reach, and I want to encourage you to continue that. I know you will, and I want to congratulate you again on all your accomplishments. I'd also like to thank everyone who attended last Thursday's Relay for Life kickoff event. It was one of our most successful kickoffs in the past 10 years. For those of you who are unaware, Nutley has raised as a community over a million dollars. I believe it's $1,081,000. And for a community this size, it's an unbelievable accomplishment. And I'd also like to commend Mayor, if I might. The Nutley Irish, I know President McEmery is here with us this evening. They had their grand marshal dinner on Thursday night, which we all attended, and support them because of the wonderful parade that they put on, and not only just the parade and the festivities of celebrating St. Patrick's Day, but also for all the community involvement that they're involved in. All right, they contribute to the Relay for Life, and I know they contribute to the Hope Program. Commissioner Rogers, I know that they're always involved in your Health Department program, so whenever and wherever they can help, they step up. So Mr. McEmery, thank you, and thank the Nutley Irish for all that you do for Nutley. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have to say about today's program, seeing the rapport that the two officers had with the graders, it was really enlightening and satisfying. And to have the Governor come and choose Nutley, highlight our program here at Nutley is a great honor, not only to the town. Great to see it all come together today. I have one announcement. There'll be electronic recycling, February 18th, from 9:00 to 1:00, in Parking Lot 8, which is on William Street behind the Warrico Station. So all your TVs, other electronics can be dropped off between that time. That's Saturday, February 18th. Any other announcements? Resolutions. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes. Whereas Township of Nutley entered into a contract with Veridian Environmental Consultants Upper Montclair, New Jersey, for environmental services via Resolution 122-16 on May 3rd, 2016, for a contract not to exceed $44,935. And whereas the Director of Parks and Public Property has recommended the following change order. Change Order Number 3, Environmental Services, in the amount of $1,296.25. Funds are available from Capital Ordinance Number 3344B and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification being attached to this resolution now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that Change Order Number 3, in the amount of $1,296.25B, and is hereby approved. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized professional services as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to the provision of NJSA 19:44A-20.4 or 20.5 as appropriate. And whereas the Township of Nutley through the Department of Parks and Recreation has a need to acquire specialized and professional services for groundwater investigations. And whereas the anticipated term of this contract is for 12 months from the date of the contract award. And whereas Veridian Environmental Consultants Upper Montclair, New Jersey, has submitted a proposal indicating that they will provide such services for a sum not to exceed $15,100. And whereas Veridian Environmental Consultants has completed and submitted a Business Entity Disclosure Certification, which certifies that said corporation has not made any reportable disqualifying contributions to a political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit Veridian Environmental Consultants from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. Whereas funds are available from Account Number 3323K in the amount of $15,100 and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification being attached to this resolution now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey enter into a contract with Veridian Environmental Consultants as described herein. Be it further resolved that a business disclosure, entity certification, and the determination of value be placed on file with this resolution. And be it further resolved that a notice of this action shall be printed once in the Nutley Sun in accordance with local public contracts law. I move the resolution.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Commissioner Evans?
Thank you. Whereas the Township of Nutley holds tax certificates, more specifically set forth in the annexed Tax Foreclosure List, which pertains to property within the Township of Nutley. Whereas the Township of Nutley has determined that said tax certificate shall be foreclosed by summary proceeding in rem. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex, the tax certificate 15-00024, as shown in the annexed Tax Foreclosure List, now held by the Township of Nutley, be foreclosed by summary processing rem, as described by NJSA 54:5-104-29 as amended, and pursuant to the rules of civil practice of the Superior Court of New Jersey. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Whereas Resolution 2117 entitled Full Tax Exemption was adopted by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley at their meeting, held on January 17th, 2017, whereas said exemption was denied by the Essex County Tax Board of Taxation, primarily due to a hiccup with the deed which will now be reprocessed. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex State of New Jersey, by Resolution 2117B, and here is hereby rescinded and James S. LaFaso not be granted full tax exemption from paying property taxes on Block 4901, Law 2, known as 21 Oak Crest Place. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, the Treasurer B. and she is hereby authorized to refund overpayment of water charges for Block 900/1/C4051, for a total amount of $3,906.32. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the Code Enforcement Department received zoning certificate fee in the amount of $250 from Ms. Janet DePalma for property located at 527 Franklin Avenue. Whereas it has... It was determined by the Code Enforcement Department that the applicant does not require his zoning certificate for the property located at 527 Franklin Avenue. Whereas funds will be available from Account 701301104, and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey. The Township Treasurer is hereby authorized to refund zoning certificate fee in the amount of $250 to Ms. Janet DePalma. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
I just have one resolution that I'll read by title. Resolution authorizing the Township of Nutley Office of Emergency Management to accept funds from a sub grant award of the federal fiscal year 2016 of Emergency Management Agency Assistance Program funding, and for the Chief Financial Officer of the Township of Nutley to amend the budget and certify the availability of the funds. I move the resolution. It's number 3917.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Janet DePalma, can I read the first resolution by title?
Yes.
It is on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. It's Resolution 40-17. Resolution to Township Commissioners, Township of Nutley authorizing an escrow agreement with PB Nutcliffe Master LLC, providing for payment reimbursement of township expenses relating to the potential redevelopment of all or portions of the remaining half of the Roche development area. Move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas Township of Nutley pursuant to NJSA 52:34-62C139, made by resolution without advertising for bids, purchase goods or services through use of a nationally recognized and accepted cooperative purchasing program that has been developed utilizing competitive bidding process by another contracting unit within the state of New Jersey within any other state when available. And whereas the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, passed Resolution Number 284-16 on November 21st, 2016, authorizing the purchasing agent to purchase certain goods or services from approved National Joint Powers Alliance vendor pursuant to all conditions of the individual contracts in the year 2017, compensing January 1st, 2017 through December 1st. Whereas the Municipal Clerk, Township of Nutley, has advertised a township notice of intent to award a contract under a National Joint Powers Alliance Cooperative in the January 19th, 2017 issue of the Nutley Sun. Whereas the Township of Nutley Department of Public Works intends to purchase a Kenworth T370 four-by-four chassis for single axle stainless steel dump body patrol truck package and related accessories from National Auto Fleet Group, 490 Auto Center Drive, Watsonville, California, a vendor affiliated with the National Joint Powers Alliance, which is subject to all conditions applicable to the utilization of a national buying cooperative. Whereas Department of Public Works has spent several months researching several four-by-four chassis, stainless steel dump body patrol truck packages and related accessories, have determined that the Kenworth T370 four-by-four chassis is best suited for the township needs, best on performance, cost savings, and minimal downtime. Whereas the National Auto Fleet Group has provided a quote for the Kenworth T370 four-by-four chassis truck and related accessories in the amount of $188,428. And whereas funds are available from Capital Ordinance Number 3294G in the amount of $85,000, Capital Ordinance Number 3296A in the amount of $85,000, and Capital Ordinance Number 333G in the amount of $18,428. And have certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification be attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the purchasing agent B. and she is hereby authorized to purchase a Kenworth T370 four-by-four chassis and related accessories in the amount of $188,428 from the National Auto Fleet Group, who is approved National Joint Powers Alliance vendor. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
(laughing)
Commissioner Evans?
Here, Tom.
Yeah, I was on mute. Yes, aye.
Aye, there you go.
Commissioner Petracco?
(laughing) Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the mandatory source separation recycling act, Public Law 1987, Chapter 102, has established a recycling fund for which tonnage grants may be made to counties in order to encourage local source separation recycling programs where it is in the intent and the spirit of the mandatory source separation recycling act to use the tonnage grants to develop new municipal recycling programs and to continue to expand existing programs. Whereas such a resolution should designate the individual authorized to ensure that the application is properly completed and timely filed. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the Township of Nutley hereby endorses the submission of 2016 municipal recycling tonnage grant application. In the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, designate Salvatore Ferraro Recycling Coordinator, Township of Nutley, to ensure that the application is properly filed. to ensure that the application is properly filed. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Whereas Township of Nutley through the Department of Public Works has a need to acquire services of an engineering consultant as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to provisions of NJSA 19:44A-20.4 or 20.5 as appropriate. Whereas the engineering coordinator has determined and certified in writing that the value of the aggregate services provided by the vendor for the term of this contract will exceed seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. And whereas the anticipated term of the contract is for 12 months from January 1st, 2017, January through December 31st, 2017. Whereas Pinoni Associates 24 Commerce Street, Suite 300, North New Jersey has submitted a proposal dated December 30th, 2016, indicating they will provide engineering services according to a fee schedule attached. And whereas Pinoni Associates has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that the said corporation has not made any disqualifying reportable contributions to political candidate or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year. And the contract will prohibit Pinoni Associates from making reportable contributions pursuant to the contract. Whereas funds are available from account number 7-01-404-200 in the amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for general engineering services subject to the adoption of 2017 budget and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification be attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley enter into a contract with Pinoni Associates as described herein. Further resolved that the business disclosure entity certification and the determination of value be placed on file with this resolution. Be further resolved that a notice of this action shall be printed once in the Nutley Sun in accordance with the local public contracts law. Resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Whereas bids for the 2017 acceptance of recycling vegetative waste to include leaf and grass clippings were received and opened on January 25th, 2017. Whereas the term of the contract shall be for one year from the award date with an option for a two-year, two-one-year extension subject to availability of funds to the subsequent annual budgets. And whereas Esprit Tunde &amp; Sons PO Box 1407 Summit, New Jersey was a low bidder for the removal and recycling of Class B clean wood brush in the amount of six dollars seventy-five cents per cubic yard, for the removal and recycling of Class C leaves in the amount of eight dollars and fifteen cents per yard, and for the removal and recycling of Class C grass clippings in the amount of fourteen dollars and sixty-nine. Whereas the funds are available from account number 701422-209 in the amount of seventy-one thousand subject to the adoption of 2017 municipal budget and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification be attached to this resolution. Followed by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that a contract be awarded to Esprit Tunde &amp; Sons not to exceed seventy-one thousand dollars and that the Mayor and Township Clerk are authorized to enter it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley honors the heritage of African Americans and acknowledges their many contributions to our nation, our state and our township. Whereas Dr. Carter Goodwin Woodson established Black History Week in February of 1926, choosing a month that marks the birthdays of two important men who greatly impacted the African American population, Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass. And whereas in the year 1976, the observance was expanded to Black History Month. Quality and Opportunity, 1996, renamed National African American History Month. Therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley celebrates National African American History Month 2017 and honors the many achievements and contributions made by African Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual development in our nation, our township. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Whereas raffle applications have been received from the following organizations. Friends of Phoenix Center Foundation License Number 4-17 On-Premise 50/50 Cash Raffle to be held Friday, April 28th, 2017. Friends of Phoenix Center Foundation License Number 5-17 Casino Night to be held Friday, April 28th, 2017. Nutley Irish American Alliance License Number 6-17 On-Premise Merchandise Raffle to be held Saturday, February 25th, 2017. Nutley Irish American Alliance License Number 7-17 On-Premise 50/50 Cash Raffle to be held Saturday, February 25th. Rotary Club of Nutley License Number 8-17 On-Premise Merchandise Raffle to be held Saturday, April 1st, 2017. Nutley Elks Lodge Number 1290 License Number 9-17 Off-Premise 50/50 Cash Raffle to be held Saturday, April 28th, 2017. Knights of Columbus Number 14712 Holy Family Council License Number 11-17 Off-Premise Merchandise Raffle to be held Sunday, May 28th, 2017. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk and the police department. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, before mentioned license are approved and the municipal clerk is authorized to issue the license. Resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Whereas an application to conduct senior bingo games has been received from the Nutley Senior Service Club to conduct nonprofit bingo games for residents effective March 1st, 2017 to March 1st, 2019. Whereas the application has been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk and the police department. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that the license is approved and the municipal clerk be here. He and she is hereby authorized to issue the license to the Nutley Senior Service Club. H17, I move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Clark, will you read the notice?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of decorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Would anybody like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Penny Landry, 135 Lakeside Drive. The first thing I'd like to say is I'd like to congratulate Commissioner Petrako, Mayor Scarpelli, Detective Padilla, Sam Corella, all of those who were involved in having the governor come today to our town and also for the great things that are being done with the lead program. And to add to this, I'd like to say that I read an article today, which touched me, by an ER doctor. And basically what he said was, he questioned why are we more worried about gluten than heroin? He said that heroin is now something that children of the middle and upper class should be warned about. Our state of mind in regards to heroin has largely been, "I am as worried about heroin as I am about my son being eaten by a lion in my front yard." He continues, "As an ER doctor, let me be the one to tell you, the lion is in your yard." I spoke with a 28-year-old Nutley High School graduate two weeks ago. Seven of her classmates have died due to drug overdoses. In a small town like Nutley, seven from a graduating class is really high. So I agree with reaching out to the sixth graders. I also think that we need to expand our reach into our younger and our older adult population because as Governor Christie explained today to the sixth graders, he explained that four out of five heroin users started with prescription drugs. Since September 2016, I have been coming here and attempting to meet with Commissioner Petrako and with the town leaders. I was so excited because finally Chief Strumalo had Detective Padilla call me and confirm that we had a meeting for Wednesday, February 8th. I sent a confirmation email on Monday, February 6th to Detective Padilla and in it I stated that there would be a Nutley parent joining us, a Nutley district staff member who had had her superintendent, I mean, who had had her principal change her lunch so she could attend, and then also another Nutley citizen homeowner who works in New York who would be joining us by phone. I prepared an agenda that we all agreed upon. And unfortunately, yesterday, I received a call from Detective Padilla saying that the meeting had been canceled. I asked him why the meeting was canceled and he said that he would not send me an email stating why and that I had to discuss this with Chief Strumalo. I sent two emails to Chief Strumalo and placed two calls to Chief Strumalo and it was not returned. I also sent two emails to Sam asking to meet with Commissioner Petrako concerning this. And I, as of this time, do not have a meeting date for myself and the three other adult women homeowners of this community who would like to be involved in some program. So far, I have requested that the meeting dates for the municipal alliance meetings be made public and I was told that they are still being scheduled. I have asked about other meetings where individuals, concerned citizens, can get involved and have gotten no response. So I am here pleading, begging with you as our town leaders